That was crazy.
Yeah, so that was a zoom bomb unfortunately. But good job. Ending the meeting quickly.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
Alright, it says Miranda, do we trust it?
Yes.
Alright, we got us one, two, three, four, we're all back. Never seen that happen before. I was like, oh, I do. I tried to mute them and they unmuted themselves again and.
Oh yeah, somehow they, there's something that, that people can do where they just take over the audio. You know, they, it's almost like they become the host and the only way to fix it is just to end the meeting.
Well, thank you for coming back.
Good job.
Thanks, thanks.
Doing that quick.
Yeah. You're cool under pressure.
She can hear me. Right. I didn't even, I didn't see anything. I just heard, I started hearing just strange sounds and when you said there was somebody coming in that nobody knew, it just seemed odd so late in the meeting, but good job.
Well, Colin had a weird name, so I figured maybe it was one of their friends coming on or something. Alright. Um, so we were discussing the mountain bike camp. I like the idea, what we were discussing of getting in a couple weekend days next year early.
You mean this fall?
If we can do this fall, maybe.
Are you talking about next year?
Um, I was talking about next year because I just didn't know how feasible it was to do it this year. So if it, if we could do it this year, run a couple of one day programs or you know, two, two Saturdays or something, great, but a lot of sports are starting up and everything.
Um, right.
I think introducing it, I guess part of my idea is introducing it at the one day at $65. Doesn't sound as overwhelming as when you're saying four days for 260. And this will give them an idea of, of their program and when it comes around next year, they'll either like it or not.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I need to nail down one of the schools. Um, and I'll reach, I'll reach out to South Kent again to see if I can get some communication going. To you, Coach.
Uh, sorry.
So, yeah, so I think, you know, that's the piece, right? We need to get them on board.
I'd say maybe we ask them to do it because didn't he say he already has a good relationship with Andrew?
That sounds like it, yeah.
And maybe since Andrew already knows about them, have Colin or Chris reach out to him. But I think we should reach back out to Colin and ask about doing a one day program if he has any weekend days available. Anybody else like that idea?
I love the idea. I just think that we may need to defer a little bit more to the school that we partner with and see when they have availability for a one day program and then offer those dates to Colin. Only because, you know, using their facilities.
Well, Kent School is going to charge us and Colin has a good relationship with South Kent School. So when we, when Abigail or when Miranda reaches out to him, maybe ask if he talks to them or if we do.
Yeah, I think it would definitely be best for him to do the legwork if at all possible.
Or at least reach out to Andrew and say, or whomever he's talking to at the school to say, do you have some days available?
Yep, I can certainly gather a little bit more information and see how we want to move forward.
So can we make a motion for that? That way you can, if we can figure it out, we can go forward without having to wait for September.
So is the motion to move ahead with the mountain bike camp, one day, fall offering and to have Colin of the mountain bike camp, reach out to both the South Kent School and the Kent School to see what their availability is for hosting this one day event?
That's a good start. We'll do that for the first one. No, that's great. It covers that. I think it should be made in two different motions. Um, can I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julia. Any more discussion on it? This again is just for the one day program this fall. All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
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 I'm guessing John's gonna be an aye. Um, if he's not, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, the next motion I would suggest is to get on their schedule for next year before they book up because we won't have, well, when's our next meeting? We may not have time and they'll be already full.
I think the next one is September 20th, yeah. Let me just, uh, yeah, 20th.
Okay. I think that's advantageous, Lynn, to, to go ahead and move forward with this and get on their schedule. And, you know, re- reiterate the offer for the 10% discount.
And that 10% would be our fee so that we didn't have to charge more. We'll go back up to the 60. Yeah, when you, I don't think it sounds bad when you think about it as 65 a day, but when you say the 260, it sounds a little bit scarier. That's me personally. I I paid 65 bucks to go get my kids out of the house for three hours mountain biking.
Okay, so Lynn, do you, I'm sorry, did you make that motion? Who's?
I can if nobody else wants to make it. So I will make that motion to get Kent Park and Rec on the mountain bike camp schedule for 2022.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, where are we on this thing? Alright, let's go. A quick update on the Director's Search Committee. We had a meeting. Uh, we talked about a few different things and including the job description and Julia took that on and made some changes and we will have a meeting on Wednesday night and our second meeting and go from there. We're discussing questions to ask. Um, changing up the job description, not changing it, but cleaning it up and can't remember what else is on there. Any questions on that? Okay, moving along, we got a bit to talk about here. Parks, projects, pool opening, seasonal worker, woodchucks and Emery Park aerator, so. Um, I'll start with the pool opening and I'm gonna actually work that in with the next one with the lifeguard class, so. I worked my butt off trying to get this pool open. I've worked hard trying to, working with David to get the lifeguard instructor class, which was successful, but unfortunately our objective of being able to hire some of those people uh, did not work out. They actually all had other jobs and one is in Canaan, one was a recertification. Um, honestly, one I did not check into, but the other three all had, or other four all had jobs lined up. So, um, that kind of put another damper on it. Um, and then we got the lovely notice that the aerator, after I went up there and spent hours skimming that gunk off the top of the pool, um, we went to put the aerator, not we, but Rick went to put the aerator in and evidently it is broke and we will need to get a new aerator, so we will need to vote on that tonight uh, to do, to get a new aerator rather than just fixing the motor. It's, it's old and it's really not worth just replacing the motor or anything. I think at this point, we've got its life use out of it and we should get a new one. Um, so with that all being said, I hate to say it, but, and at this time of the year, the pool is just not gonna get open this year.
What's the cost of a new one, Lynn?
Well, when you purchased it in 2016, does that sound about right?
Yeah, five years. Yeah, five years.
I thought it was longer.
Oh, it, it, I think it was 16. I, I, I just looked at the invoice, so, um, it was, I want to say, and I don't have it, I don't have it with me, but it was 1355 or something like that.
13,000 or 1300?
1300.
Just checking.
Um, and so I had called and talked to the company. And so, yes, we could, we could purchase a new one and obviously that's up to you guys. Um, so you can either, if we wanted to go to the repair route, I'm just giving you the information, you can either have the parts shipped to you, swap them out. And that's that, or you can have, and since it's looking like we're probably pool is probably not going to be opened, then we have time and you can, you can ship the whole thing to them. They will swap out the parts and make sure it's running and then they'll send the whole thing back to you. And that, you know, obviously would be cheaper than replacing the whole thing, but then, you know, it's you're still using some of the old parts, the float and whatever. I'm not, I'm not an expert on aerators, so I don't, I don't know exactly what all the different parts are, but you know, the main components are the motor and the cord and all that. And so those are the two options, you know, since since we have some time, I think if, if you guys wanted to go with the just repair route, it would make sense to send the whole thing in and then they're responsible for fixing it. And then we can make sure that, you know, that then at least it comes back, we know it would be working whereas.
Warranted.
Yeah, so whoever, I certainly can't repair it, whoever we get to repair it here, you know, obviously hopefully they're knowledgeable, but then it's, then if it doesn't work, then it's on us again, so.
Do you have any costs on those repairs, sending it in?
So Rick had initially called and he kind of priced it out and it sounded like it was like 730 to have the parts shipped or to replace the parts. I don't know exactly and I can certainly find out pretty quickly if we want to send it in, how much that would be. But unfortunately, we just missed the warranty window, I think. You know, we, by a couple months, I asked and he said, you know, they, they could maybe help us out with a slight discount, but we weren't getting a, a new aerator out of it.
So the 730 is if we fix it?
I think so, yeah, but I would probably want to double check that before I said that, certainly.
Because if we paid 1300, that's 730 if we fix it. So if we send it out to them, we have the cost of the the shipping.
Shipping, yeah.
We have their repair bill and then whatever it costs to ship back. But we still have to pay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, when I talked to them, because I was like, well, what's the advantage of just having it us repair? So really, I don't think they charge us for the labor. So they, I said, you know, what, wh- what's the difference? What's the price difference? He said, basically, it's just more shipping because you're sending the whole thing to them. And so you're paying more in shipping. Um, so you're just saving a little bit. And you're, you know, obviously you still have to buy the parts from them, but I don't, I don't think, and I, I will certainly double check, but I don't think that they charge for labor. So it would just be the cost of the extra shipping.
What kind of a guarantee would they give us after the repair?
Um, again, I'm not certain on that. I would, I can, I can send an inquiry into that.
I think we need, we have the 730 if we fix it, plus whatever we have to pay for the person to fix it here. And it's not warranted by the company to write against. Um, so we need to know the price difference and, and mailing it to them, shipping it to them and having them fix it. We need a number for that. Thankfully, we do have time.
Hey Lynn, does this, is there some, um, possible value to calling like one of the local pool companies? Even, you know, I know we have a town, yeah, to just say, can you come take a look at it? And I think that would, that wouldn't cost us any shipping and being out of it and, you know, might make sense to have somebody local just, who's a pool person to, to say, yeah, this is worth sending away for repair or
Or maybe Matt can fix it.
Right, or, or he could fix it, or he could in his professional opinion say, you're cra- I, I can't fix it, you're crazy to, you know, spend any money shipping it off for them to have it back because it's really at the end of its life anyway. Well, might, you know, and that could cost, you know, a hundred dollars. It could cost less than that. Um, so just a thought.
I think that's a good idea. I can do that. I were friends with them. You guys want me to go that way?
Yep.
That sounds good.
Alright, I'll reach out to to them and see if I can maybe meet him up there one day or John can.
So, and you know, Rick has told you exactly what's, so he that when it's plugged into the ground faults, it just blows every and he's plugged it into multiple outlets and, and it blows it every time. So it's not just Yeah, yeah. You, I'm not an expert on electrical stuff. You're probably more knowledgeable, knowledgeable of that, but you could double check with Rick, but it sounds like wherever he, he plugged it into multiple different outlets and it, it wasn't just at the pool.
Okay. I'll ask Hubby with that means. Alright, fair enough. Cool. Um, what else was in there?
Um, woodchucks.
From what I've understand, from what I've heard, is that Bob has trapped a few?
Yes. He's, but he, so he says he's trapped, somebody's just getting overrun now. There's, they've reproduced and there's many.
Does he know where they're coming from? Like, is there a hole in the middle of the field or are they?
It sounds like there's some brush, um, kind of in between where his house is. I'm just trying to think of my directions here.
Yeah, it's usually by the drain there. It goes into, it goes into the Kent, uh, fields there, it usually drains and they, we always have a problem there, but I didn't think it was that bad, so.
Um, and he, when he came in, he seemed to think like, if we just cleared out some of those the brush in there, that that would help because they would have nowhere to go, but I don't.
Yeah, he's right, because like the last time we tried to clean that out, cleaned it up pretty good, it worked out well. They didn't come back, so. Yeah, I think that needs to be done by the public works in town here, yep.
Do.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that it would be more appropriate to contract with somebody who does that.
Like woodchuck removal or just clearing the brush?
Probably start with the clearing the brush if we think that changing the habitat.
Yes, it usually works that way, yep.
Send Diane out there to find the hole.
She found the fox one time. Yeah, but those drains are, yeah, they have, they've been neglected for a while, so yeah, they definitely need a good cleaning out. Well.
I mean, do you, do you want me to contact a few companies and get some quotes? What, what's?
I think you want to go to Public Works first, getting to clean it out. See if that does.
I know that they're very, very full plates. Is, so it, it's a proper 12 month out of the year stream? Is that what we're talking about?
Yep, exactly.
I don't know if there's, maybe, maybe talk to Lynn Werner at, or Donna Hayes at Inland Wetlands. I don't know if there's like parameters that you need to stay in because it's a water course.
Sure, Rick knows all those regulations.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can talk to Rick, Miranda, when you're in the office on Monday.
Okay.
And then we'll figure out what the proper, I don't want to, you know, be out of bounds as far as just going and having you guys get somebody to clear out some brush if there's got to be some permitting or something.
Alright, so we're gonna start with, with Rick and Donna. To see if there's any rules or whatever and we're gonna try to go the cleaning the brush route. Change the habitat and see if they leave. He's not gonna wanna are we gonna want to wait and see?
He seemed pretty frustrated. Um, you know, it sounds like
Are they eating vegetation or his plants or something, or they just? What are they doing to irritate him?
Um, you know, they dig under, around the house, under the deck, or I don't know if he's got a deck, but it sounds like they're getting in in and around the house, um. Just being a general nuisance, whatever woodchucks do. I don't know if he has a garden or not.
I don't think he has one there. There'll be flowers, and if they're getting those. Alright, I have no idea what to do with chipmunks. I started reading about it. I said, put dog hair out, pee around it, bomb them, shoot them how? Yeah, they're not gonna go for that.
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe we start with the brush removal, see if that helps and then if not, then maybe we look at having somebody come in and trap them professionally. I don't, I don't know. But maybe we start with brush removal first, see if that helps.
Alright.
Didn't we, oh, that was beavers that we killed at Emery?
They moved. Um, any projects going on there that we need to discuss?
Well, we still haven't had that culvert fixed yet and it's kind of, it's getting dangerous now, so, um, from what I'm told, so. I think that should be on, we've already passed that on, I hopefully, to the town works, but.
At Kent Common, John?
Yep.
I'll mention it again to Rick. I know it was definitely on his list.
For this year? The other thing too is, um, so, you know, I get, I'm getting calls at home here. I don't mind it, I love it, but, um, apparently, we need to spray some of the vinegar that he's got as well, Jean. Um, we used to do that, well, I used to do that, um, all the time to keep the burrs down, but unfortunately, that seems to be neglected. Um, and it's a lot of weed whacking that needs to be done as well because the parks are look, looking really bad out there, so, I mean, if you have, if he has any spare time, I mean, I would, you know, put somebody on weed whacking and he's got that articulated, uh, brush mower that could do a lot of the work, so.
So, I mean, you've been getting calls from residents?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so if you can pass them along to him.
I mean, the parents always complain about the, uh, the burrs every year. So I get out there as fast as I can, but I mean, you, you know, I'm not there anymore doing all that stuff because I'm, I'm laid up in the house. So, I mean, it's just a matter of, somebody has to pick up the slack.
I mean, does it make sense, I'm sorry, does it make sense to I, it, put like a laundry list of things together, you know, with the brush?
Oh, we already did, we already did.
I, I, I know, and then, so does it make sense to look at getting a quote to have some of that work done, like you have a landscape company come in and, and do it if if we're not getting results and Public Works is busy and they, they just can't get out there to do it, I mean, does that make sense to, we, so we have some money in the budget for maintenance for the parks, does it make sense to just get some quotes to see what we can have done and, and just do it and have it done?
And the vinegar doesn't really get rid of the burrs.
No, but if you have somebody that's there part-time or, or full-time, whatever, and they're using the vinegar on the trail, I mean, even the, even the walkway at Common's Park is bad. I mean, it's full of grass now, I mean, it's, uh, and then we have a lot of erosion up there apparently, um, from what Diana's telling me. From the, the hillside and washing out all the time, even after they put down the new rock, the gravel mix, and it's not working out. Um, but yeah, I mean, but I mean, that's something we've got to talk about for, for now or until the, until we can do something. I mean, we need to, either a part-time person or we need somebody to just take care of all that stuff. It's just I mean, I put a lot of effort in that over the last eight years and, uh, it's same, you know, from what the pictures I saw that somebody sent me that it's just gone to hell, so.
Yeah, and I think that John, in, you and Diane really made an effort to collect all of the maintenance needs for both of those parks. And I don't know what it's, what it takes for us as a commission to make a move to hire somebody to to take, to maintain the parks, even if it's a seasonal thing, just something so we can start getting some momentum with.
Yeah, it's only a seasonal, yeah, it's only a seasonal thing. I mean, it's, I don't think any lawn company or, or contractor like that would be involved into something that's just only seasonal, but you never know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, saying now, you know, to get, to come in and sweep and, and clean it up for, for the fall and then, and then just have it done and get a, put a couple quotes together to have, to do that and then, and then we have a conversation again. Or whoever, whoever has a conversation again in the spring about what, how we're, how we're maintaining the parks in the long term.
I would be for hiring a part-time a part-time worker to do these things, even if that is a landscape company, because whomever we hire will need to have their own equipment. So if we started talking about it now and get on to a landscape company's, it doesn't have to be a landscape company, it could just be a jobs person or a single person that owns a small company. Um, somebody to get in there and, and help us do these things, so we're not laying all this stuff on Public Works or waiting for them to have time to do it. Um, not things like fixing the, not like fixing the drain, but going over and actually, you know, taking these burrs out and not just spraying them, getting down to the weeds and getting them out of there for real. And I think that, you know, I have a couple people in mind, but I think that that would get things done more quickly.
And I, I, I agree with you. And I think that the difference between hardcore infrastructure like the culvert, we need Public Works to do that for us, but
Right, right.
Yeah.
But even if that part-time person, you know, maybe we help, we take away some of the mowing from Ricky's guys or that'll depend on the person, or do we just task them, just some things to think about? Do we just task them with? I don't know, making sure there's no bees in the equipment and making sure that the equipment is good and if they see the broken gate at Emery Park, they come and, you know, report it and we can get it, somebody that has some, is a jack-of-all-trades type person.
They come through monthly maybe.
Sounds like you guys are in the beginnings of a job description.
Yep, basically, yep. A good four months out of the year anyhow.
Yeah, we've done a lot of lake work on this, so it would be great to do it. And I'm sorry, team, I have to get off this call. So I know without me, there's no longer a quorum. I can't stay on any longer. So if, if there's a motion here with this maintenance, I'd love to try to make something happen there, but I'm, I'm gonna have to go after that.
I don't think we need to make a motion on that yet. We can start looking around. Miranda can start looking around if she has time or anybody that has some suggestions, you know, if you see somebody around town that you know.
We could, we could ask across the street at Kent Greenhouse. They have their own landscaping company now. We could start with them.
Yeah, and Miguel, the Rojas, is a have a nice
Yep.
You know, they would be really great at that. Um, just in, I don't know, that's just off the top of my head. There's plenty of them that we could use.
Awesome.
Um, so before you leave, Abigail, because we will have to close out this meeting when you leave.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's two hour meeting already, so. Um, I think the only thing that's serious on here is the after-school program staffing and interviewing. Uh, Miranda has, we won't be able to get into too much detail, but she has a couple people that we will be ready to interview and we'll need a couple of volunteers to help with those interviews. She can get those set up and, and see who wants to join her.
I think in similar fashion, if you, Miranda, once you have the interviews set up, maybe send out an email to the commission and ask who's available. And if no one's available, obviously we'd have to reschedule with the person, but hopefully out of the eight of us. And how many, how many commissioners per interview? Is it, is it okay to have one or do we want more than one?
I think it was usually a director and two to three uh commissioners. When we do this, like for the counselors or that's what we usually do for the counselors. Like for pool counselor.
Or, I think, yeah, when we did that, it was like a set time.
Like, uh, I don't know, like five o'clock
Mm-hmm.
On a certain day. And then maybe whoever can do it can do it.
All right. Um, fall soccer's on its way. Parks master plan budget, the only thing anybody, if you look through the reports, Miranda has to sign off on the budget on the financials for this year. So.
Yeah, maybe if people look at it, if there's anything major that strikes you that we need to talk about, then we'll have to call a special meeting. But if there's nothing major in that, then I'll look at it and.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention because I don't think the fact that that the director had to sign off on the financials was ever brought to our attention before, so that's interesting.
Yeah, I, I have no idea if that's a new thing or not.
Probably not, but I, I appreciate knowing that, some of the things we didn't get to know.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to go.
I think that's all that, um, there's nothing else pressing on the agenda, so. Did that. Thank you, Abigail.
Yeah. Great meeting.
Yeah, great meeting tonight, guys. Good night.
So hang on, we will need, because we are not actually finishing the agenda, we will need a motion to adjourn at this point. So if I could please have that motion to adjourn at 9:07 PM.
Make that motion.
Thank you, John. Julia, you wanna second it?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we will have to finish this at a later time. Again, nothing is totally pressing.
When, you said 9:07?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Yep, you too. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Night, everybody.
Hey Lynn.
Yeah. You there?
Yeah.
Hang on.
All right.
I'm here. All right, hold on, John.